Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the St. Peter School Board, Monday, May fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, six thirty-two P. M. in the St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. First thing we need to do is call the meeting to order. If you have items that you'd like to speak to the board about, please make sure to fill out a card in the back and give those to Sarah. We'll get to those on the agenda. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the review and justice for all.
All right, we need to consider and adopt the agenda before us.
Well, there you go. There was three of us. Ladies first, I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Then I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. Sarah, do we have any requests to speak? All right. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda items, which are found in your packet.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there are any discussion or items, please feel free to share.
I would just like to call attention to the retirement of Tim Regner, our business manager, who served the district for many years, and most notably through construction of a high school and everything that goes with that and a referendum, and of course, the very complex COVID funding streams from both the federal and the state government. And he has served the district very, very well, and we will miss him a lot. But congratulations to him.
Indeed, congrats to him.
So we do have people retire every now and then, huh?
Every once in a while.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Student spotlight, Mrs. Engeldinger.
I'm excited to introduce you to Isam Ibrahim and Luke Pearson. They are the founding members of the St. Peter High School Aerospace Club. I think I've talked about it before, that one of the neat things at the new high school has been that our, the club scene has, different club scene, has flourished.
Yeah.
And, and really, as long as kids have an interest and they are able to find an advisor, we've, we've got the space and are happy to, to provide that for them. Dr. Dimick is also here, is backup. He was the advisor who agreed to hang out with the rocket launchers before and after school. And before they talk about their club, I just want to tell one story. It was a brutally cold and windy February day, I believe it was, and Dr. Dimick came to find somebody with keys to get onto the roof because a rocket had landed on the roof of the high school. So I had the pleasure of, of watching a, a launch that afternoon. So I'll let you guys talk about, about the club and why you wanted to start it and how it's going and where you would like to take it.
Shall I begin?
Yeah, thanks for being here.
So Aerospace Club started in around November twenty twenty-two. The precise day, around the seventeenth, I, I forgot, it was kind of a long time ago. Logan and I have been in talks of creating a club at St. Peter High for approximately one month prior to that date. And once that date came into play, we had everything up, up and running, everything planned out, and we were ready to receive help from Mrs. Engeldinger and Mr. Dimick. And we'll start up something amazing, I believe. However.
Okay. The story takes a good turn.
However, for most of November, I wasn't even in the country. I was in Saudi Arabia, so I had to, I had to talk to Logan while being eight hours ahead of Central Standard Time. So I had to stay up around like four A. M. local Saudi time and talk to Logan about this and that and this over the phone to make sure that Aerospace Club wouldn't flop once it was, once it was initiated. We started talking about UI, the UI design of each and every advertisement, each and every flyer that was going to be presented throughout the high school. And at first, we didn't get any members. It was at one, it was at two members up until March, and then we got our first member. So that was pretty cool.
We're hoping for a fan club after the public launch.
Yeah. And yeah, we'll get to the public launch a tad bit later. But to summarize, it begun, it begun and it's continuing on, and hopefully Aerospace Fun incoming. The sky is the limit.
I liked that.
You see what he did there?
Anything you'd like to add, Logan?
Um, so yeah, up until we got our first member, we were just, you know, experimenting with what we wanted to do. And we've gotten a pretty good idea of what we want to do now, and it's mostly rocketry. And so we built our first rocket. We actually built it way back in December, but winter isn't a great time to launch rockets. So we launched it maybe two weeks ago, and it went great. However, now we want to launch more, and that is our problem. Yeah.
They come and find me whenever they, whenever they hit that, that point in their, in their build.
The roadblock.
Yeah. So far, so far with the high school budget, we've been able to, to pitch in a little bit for them. But I, I gather that the thing about rocket launches is that many of the parts can only be launched once.
Yes.
Yeah.
Especially when we're attempting to do simultaneous launches, much seen like in firework displays, like for example, the Fourth of July, that final, that finale, which is multiple fireworks. We can't do such a thing if we're conserving each and every part to be transferred from one rocket to one, to one other rocket. And that's where one of our main problems comes in. And that's the roadblock I mentioned earlier, and that's finances.
It's always the roadblock. So their public launch is going to be on May twenty-fourth. That's the day that we do the fire department post a fun run. So there's going to be a lot of fun activities going around surrounding that, so we hope to get some more interest going.
Yeah.
And something that Logan and I talked, referred to Aerospace Club is a very pricey hobby. And rockets aren't cheap at all, so that's, that's something that we're going to need your help on. Because to continue doing this amazing stuff within aerospace, we're going to require a push of financial help, financial aid, if you will, to continue doing the twenty-fourth display and even more displays and even more immersive and ambitious projects in the future.
What was it that you said when I asked what your, what, like your, if your dream list was in front of me?
Yeah.
That would be a pretty big list.
Yeah, I think they said to the moon is actually.
Or at least out of the stratosphere.
So I'm just, this is all like new to me. So like, what do other schools do? I mean, where, like, talk to me a little bit about, like, what are, have you seen what other schools do? I mean, how are they, how are their aerospace clubs ran, or are there other clubs like that, or?
So as far as we know, there aren't any or many in the area. Ours might even be the first.
Well, that's pretty cool.
And what, one thing we do know is that there is a national association of rocketry. So what that means is there is an association that may or may not also include Minnesota. We can, we can contact them, and in the future, they could potentially, even if they see the display, they could potentially award us a high-powered rocketry certificate up until level two, I believe, possibly level three. So that, to answer your question, we may be the first in the local area, but on a national scale, there is the National Association of Rocketry.
I have a question. How high do the rockets go?
So.
All the way.
Our last rocket went up to seven hundred feet, I believe, and the one we're planning to launch that we're building currently goes, I believe, up to six thousand feet.
Wow.
So they can go higher.
Yeah.
So do you have to get FAA clearance?
For some of them, yes, you do have to get FAA clearance.
Especially for the high-powered rockets.
So are you hoping to do aerospace or you like physics, engineering? Like, what do you want to do in the future?
So I plan to become a commercial pilot.
I plan to be an engineer.
And with the club, we actually, when we started it, we hoped to in the future, when we have enough members, to bring in guest speakers, pilots, aerospace engineers to actually talk.
Yeah. Awesome.
So what is your budget request for Mrs. Engeldinger?
Level three.
Level one needs.
For the May twenty-fourth launch. So just, just for the first launch, I believe, three hundred and sixty dollars.
That, that is, of course, for one rocket.
And so that cost covers many reusable items, so the launch pad, the rocket itself is reusable. The only material that needs to be purchased multiple times is the actual rocket motor, which, once you set it off, it's no longer usable. But everything else is reusable.
Yeah, and again, going back to, if you want to do a simultaneous launch, then that means we can't use the same renewable resources at two places at once. Therefore, the price estimates could go three hundred and sixty multiplied by how much rockets we're planning to launch. So let's say we're planning to launch six rockets. That's three hundred and sixty times six. That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of bake sales.
I appreciate you guys coming to us and saying that, and I know it's always tempting to like go out to the community and ask for money, and I really appreciate not doing that because, and we want to be able to support all of the clubs all of the time, too. And it's hard because we also have to cut teachers, too. And so I just appreciate that, and I think there's always ways that we can try to support these things, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I just, I appreciate you doing that and coming, and I, I think it's pretty cool, and I think it's something that would really hit a lot of people. So I don't know, we'll try to figure something out. I don't really know what this is going to do, but I do appreciate you going through Mrs. Engeldinger is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And doing the right thing with that, so.
And the other thing that I can see you could do, if that is a national association, they know how it is to do the fundraising, too, so ask them and get some support that way, and we'll help that way, too.
Of course, and the National Association of Rocketry, as they are a pretty big and pretty generalized program, they could even take a tiny bit of, emphasis on the tiny, by the way, a bit of time to get a hold of a member of D N A R to confirm and even award some high-powered rocketry licenses and even more for grants and stuff. Of course, we already thought of those situations.
Sure.
But it's always a good idea to keep your options open.
What grade, what grade are you guys in?
Tenth grade.
Fourth, you are?
Yes.
Obviously, you have a couple of yours left here.
There you go.
Good deal.
Look forward to it.
Yeah, it's been really fun getting to know these two kids, and can't wait to see what they do.
For this public launch.
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
My house is in downrange.
Thank you, Isam and Logan. All right, we should move on to our action items for tonight. We have several to look at, talk about, and take action on. The first of which is the, considering the approval of unrequested leaves of absence upon acquiescence of placement. We have three separate resolutions we need to look at, and these are the results of our budget adjustment. Mr. Grandseth, I'll let you talk more about it, but we need to take action on these three tonight.
Yes, back in March, when we presented the recommendations for a balanced budget, it included a reduction in staff. Last month, we took action on some non-renewals of probationary teachers, and we also proposed the placement of three teachers on unrequested leave of absence. They have been notified and given an opportunity. They have fourteen days to respond if they wanted to have a hearing about that. Two of them, we did not receive a hearing request. The third, we did receive a hearing request, but then that was retracted, and so all three are in front of you tonight to be placed on U L A by acquiescence of hearing.
So we do need to do these individually. So I'll read the resolution, and then we would need a motion and a second, and we can discuss, and then do roll call vote. Correct? Okay. So the first being for Jennifer Curtis. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District five oh eight adopted a resolution proposing placement of the listed individuals on unrequested leave of absence on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three on the grounds of financial limitations, lack of pupils, and discontinuance of positions. I will skip, I won't read everything, but I'll skip down to, there's no written request for a hearing was received by the School Board or superintendent from Jennifer Curtis as of May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Be it resolved that is proposed that tenured teacher Jennifer Curtis in Independent School District number five oh eight be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits at the close of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Said action is taken in accordance with the District Master Agreement and pursuant to Minnesota Statute one twenty-two A dot forty subdivision ten upon the grounds described in said statute and which are specifically as follows: financial limitations, discontinuance of positions. And be it further resolved that written notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave, together with a copy of this resolution, be forwarded to said teacher, and that an affidavit of the same be placed in their personnel file with a copy of the notice and resolution.
I so move the resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I'll just pop in and say that all three of these individuals who are being placed on U L A do have rights to a full-time position. Those rights go for, it's the sixth September first following placement on U L A. We hope to have opportunities for them in the future.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, we will vote. It's a roll call vote. Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Loken's guard?
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
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 The resolution has passed. Next up, another resolution, same deal.
It's exactly the same resolution with a different name.
Yep. Paula Rotabak. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District number five oh eight adopted a resolution proposing placement of Paula Rotabak on unrequested leave of absence on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three on the grounds of financial limitations, lack of pupils, and discontinuance of positions. Whereas a written request for a hearing was received on April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three and subsequently retracted on May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. So be it resolved that is proposed that tenured teacher Paula Rotabak in Independent School District number five zero eight be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits at the close of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Said action is taken in accordance with the District Master Agreement and pursuant to Minnesota Statute one twenty-two A dot forty subdivision ten upon the grounds described in said statute and which are specifically as follows: financial limitations, discontinuance of position. Be it further resolved that written notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave, together with a copy of this resolution, be forwarded to said teacher, and that affidavit of the same be placed in their personnel file with a copy of the notice and resolution. So we need to entertain a motion.
I'll move. Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will proceed to vote. Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Loken's guard?
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Kowt?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon?
Aye.
Ms. Martins?
Aye.
Resolution passes.
And the third is another identical resolution with the third name Emily Pins.
So this is for Emily Pins. Whereas the School Board of Independent School District number five zero eight adopted a resolution proposing placement of the list of Emily Pins on unrequested leave of absence on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three on the grounds of financial limitations, lack of pupils, and discontinuance of position. Whereas no written request for a hearing was received by the School Board or superintendent from Emily Pins as of May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Be it resolved that it is proposed that Emily Pins in Independent School District number five zero eight be placed on unrequested leave of absence without pay or fringe benefits at the close of the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three school year. Said action is taken in accordance with the District Master Agreement and pursuant to Minnesota Statute one twenty-two A dot forty subdivision ten upon the grounds described in said statute and which are specifically as follows: financial limitations, discontinuance of position. Be it further resolved that written notice of proposed placement on unrequested leave, together with a copy of this resolution, be forwarded to said teacher, and that an affidavit of the same be placed in their personnel file with a copy of the notice and resolution. We need to entertain a motion.
I'll move the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We will proceed to vote. Mr. Leonard?
Aye.
Mr. Loken's guard?
Aye.
Ms. Stewie?
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Kowt?
Aye.
Mr. Dixon?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Resolution passes. Item number two, consider approval of curriculum improvement plans.
Yes, this is the follow-up from our May first study session. Excuse me. Where we talked about all of the curriculum review processes that have been taking place for E L L, music, art, special education, social emotional learning, science, and technology. And we had recommendations for each of those areas that were presented that night. They are listed here as far as the purchases go. The presentation is also attached as a reminder from our discussions at the study session, and we recommend moving ahead with these changes. Some of them are smaller curriculum purchases, such as those in E L L for a program called Hands-on English and Raz Kids and online subscriptions and Pre-IPT, which is another software item. In music, I was the, the bigger item is a piano at South to replace current piano. And then at the middle school, the music room doesn't have a sound system right now. I believe they use the stereo for Mr. Graff's garage, and so.
Resourceful.
Right? He'd like his sound system back in his garage, I believe, and a smart board for that room because it is one of the few rooms that does not have one. In art, they're using the art rooms a little bit differently now, and they're moving the kiln from one room to the other, and that room does not have the, the venting or possibly the proper outlet for that kiln, and so they need to do some work to do that. And then South needs a pug mill. I don't, I'm not sure what puppies have to do with it, Mrs. Engeldinger, but I believe it's to soften clay or reuse clay. Can tell I'm not, don't have an art background. In special education, we're buying a curriculum for our D C D program called Unique. And then in our social emotional learning, which is part of our strategic plan, our goal this year was to find screeners and a curriculum. This curriculum is a pre-K through twelfth grade opportunity for our, our teachers and our students to work on some social emotional skills. In science, for our youngest learners, it's a program called Mystery Science Digital Program. It goes along with the other science curriculum changes that were, that we've been making. And then in technology, they did make the decision at the high school. We had ongoing conversations, and I think just in the last week or two, they decided to make the switch to Chromebooks. For our high school students, they will be touchscreen Chromebooks rather than iPads. And so that, that will give us more continuity through middle and high school and offer some new opportunities there. So that we can do two grades at a time, we're going to take the iPads from the tenth grade and bring them down to the fourth grade? I can't remember which grade it is, but it's at North. Second grade?
Probably second.
Second grade. And those are the, kind of the summary of the recommendations that are being made. I know with the legislative session, we might have a few more staff development pieces to put in, but we'll, we'll get that when we finish up the legislative session.
And thank you to all of the teachers who were there at our study session two weeks ago to talk about all of these. I think it's really important for us to hear directly from teachers about the things that they're doing in the classroom, right? Like, sometimes that, that important detail is stuff that we don't get to spend a lot of time hearing directly from teachers about, so it was very helpful.
And these were all things that were in our forecasted budget, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, not specifically these things, but these amounts were in there.
Right, all of these things would come from our capital budget, which each year we put a set aside for curriculum purchases. The idea is that same amount, over time, sometimes we have big purchases and sometimes we have small, but if we keep putting money towards that, then we'll be able to continue to invest in our curriculum, which is the heart and soul of what we do every day.
Any other questions or anything for Mr. Grandseth? If not, we need a motion.
I move to accept the curriculum improvement plan.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have approved the curriculum review. Thank you. Next item up, consider approval of second reading of revisions to the policy manual. These were some, the one oh four, our school district mission and equity statements, and then two ten, our conflict of interest, school board members. Comments or anything, Mr. Grandseth?
Just in one oh four, we added our equity statement to the mission statement that can be found under item three. And then in two ten, at Mr. Kowt's recommendation, and I can't find exactly where it is.
C.
Oh, there it is.
Three C.
In three C, it used to say eight thousand dollars, and now we just said that it would reflect the amount stated in Statute one twenty-three B one ninety-five. And now we just said that it would reflect the amount stated in Statute 123B 195. That way, when the statute changes, we won't have to change the dollar amount every time.
So as a reminder, we looked at these at our last full board meeting. Feedback was given, changes were made, and this is the second reading. And once we approve, then this becomes a policy until the next time we review them.
I've had no feedback, so I support the acceptance.
Any other members? Ben, any feedback? No? All right, so we need a motion.
I move that we accept the second reading of the relevant policy items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion? Hearing none will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. These two policy sections have been approved. Thank you. Next agenda item: Consider Approval of Adding an Additional Signer to District Accounts.
With the retirement of business manager Tim Regner, we have posted the position. We are hopeful to fill it before the end of his contract, June 30th. However, we also want to plan for a possible transition. What we're asking for is to add finance accountant Beaong to our financial institution signing lines so that she can make transfers if need be.
I move that we add Beaong as the additional signer for the district accounts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Is this a permanent addition or is this a changes? Do we change it again when a new district manager is hired?
It could be semi-permanent. We set these each January at the organization meeting. So we could leave it on and then change them in January.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Discussion? We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving the addition of a signer to district accounts signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We've added a signer to district accounts.
Bea will be so excited.
I bet.
Not when she sees all the favors.
Yeah, right. Sign a lot of things. All right, agenda item number five: Consider Approval of Membership in the Minnesota State High School League, MSHSL, for the 2023-2024 school year.
They have had a change in process this year. Generally, you might remember there being a resolution. This year, it's an online process where I just go on and click a button. But I didn't feel quite right just clicking a button without us having some kind of action around that. And so that's what I'm doing. I've brought it to you just to get a motion to move ahead with the high school league membership.
And this MSHSL provides structure, policy, support.
Insurance.
Insurance for all of our activities, or nearly all of our activities.
Correct.
That are MSHSL affiliated.
Not the clubs.
Right. Not the Rocket Club.
I move to approve our membership with the Minnesota State High School League.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. We have renewed our membership in the MSHSL.
I'll go click the button.
Click the button, click away. All right, we'll move on to our information items. We have an Office of Education Equity update. Ion is here with some friends. Welcome. Hello.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you for handing us. We're going to do a quick introduction. So my name is Ion Musand, the coordinator of educational equity.
My name is Barack Ahmed, and I'm the student liaison of the district.
Liliana Figueroa, Spanish student support liaison for high school in North Elementary.
Mariposa Merrill, Spanish liaison for South, pre-K, and middle school.
Today, we wanted to showcase amazing work that this team is doing. And today's presentation is about the liaisons report. So it does not include all the other responsibility for the Office of Education. I just want to clarify that. And also, we had the opportunity last week to present in front of the education committee. We had in-depth conversations and questions. And hopefully, we could continue answering those questions. So the first, and you should each have in your package.
Yep, yep, we do.
I wasn't sure. So the first page is, one thing that I'm really glad that when I came on board, that Superintendent Granseth instructed me was to make sure that, we make sure that the structures and the bases and the foundation of this office has been created for the first year. And one of my tasks was to see where we could utilize the most of the time of liaisons and the same time making sure that we're not duplicating. So the first thing that you will see is assigned each liaison in a building. So that way, we don't have Liliana Marispa being in the same building at the same time, sometimes doing the same thing for the same family. So that was one thing that was clear that they reported. And moving forward, this was the first thing that we've done. And I've heard so many good things about it from the staff and the community as well. And also, since Barack is the only Somali-speaking liaison we have, she is representing the entire district. And she will be in every building except when she's not, for some reason, not able to be at work. I am the person that steps in since I speak the language and we don't need another liaison to hire. So that's another bonus that I want to make sure that we have as a district. And this position, the liaison's positions, I believe, was, we've had it for four years in a district. But this is the first year that we were able to actually collect some qualitative and quantitative data. So this is what you're going to see the next page. Again, this is for the liaison services provided to our students and families. So this page, it shows how many students we were able to provide support. And when I say how many students, it was as of this morning, 10 o'clock, when I updated the graph, was 2,993 students. And some students will be duplicated. So they might be in EL and SPE. And some will be maybe one at category versus both categories. So just to clarify. And to say 2,900 some students, some of them, we were able to serve them more than once, twice, three times. So I just want to clarify that too as well. So the second graph that you will see is, we wanted to see where is the highest needs are. And as you could see, it's pre-K. Early childhood is the highest need. And that did not surprise any of us that doing the work. And wanted to, you know, visually see where we need more support. And then this part is, we have about 12 to 13 categories where the support is. So we picked the top five. So parent contact, interpreting, translation, attendance, transportation, and academics. So I'll have these ladies, amazing ladies, talk about each one of them briefly, hopefully.
Yeah, the top five, of course, is the parent contact. We have, that is our number one. We reach out to the parents on our phone calls. Usually, we use voice and video recordings because some of them do not speak English and they don't read what we translate in papers. So we have to basically translate the paper and then video record over that and then send out the messages. How I have it is set up by groups and WhatsApp. I have second graders, third graders, fourth graders. At the high school right now, my busiest is the seniors because of, excuse me, graduation and senior dues and everything else that comes with that. Ninth grade, everything's basically in groups and that's how I send out my mess. We send out our messages. I believe they also have that on their phones. And Merz is really good with the videos.
I, to add to that, I take my work phone with me everywhere. Like if there are special community events, I'm always video recording because it helps me and the parents to be knowing what's going on in the community. And they prefer videos or pictures so they know what's going on, so.
There's two things that we do as far as interpreter and translating.
Sure. So the difference between interpreting and translation is they're both surgeons. One is a brain surgeon, the other one is a heart surgeon. Neither can do either other's job, but they have to be equivalently be good at their jobs. So being an interpreter not necessarily mean you're translator and vice versa. So to have these amazing ladies do both, it's amazing. I just need the board to know and great work that they do.
As far as translating, we translate everything that comes out of the district. Letters, voicemails, text messages, Blackboard messages that go out to the parents. We follow up with voice, videos, and letters that have been translated that go out with it. And when the letters go out first, we make that notification, those letters are coming. Then we do voice that those who don't even read the language that we translated to. And that goes with, as far as interpreting and translating. So everything has to be going together in timely fashion. And as they go, we get the notification and we follow up with it.
For attendance is communication between the school and the parents. If a student's going to be absent and a parent calls me, I reach out to the attendance clerks at the schools. If that goes with the three-day letter and the seven-day letter for absences too, if they're missing too many days, we communicate again, clerk, parents, and that's it. If students are going to be late, absent, or leaving early, or if a student misses the bus, we try to communicate, we always communicate that as well. I always tell the parents to let us know ahead of time so we can let the bus companies know as well.
And transit.
And the transit. Because I also, I deal a lot with the city transit because some families live a mile within the school. So if they're in kindergarten, they are not going to let their child walk by home by themselves. So we reach out with the transit.
The three-day letters, seven-day letters, sorry for.
Go ahead.
I'm jumped up. Yes, you go.
Okay, I was transportation. I tried to notify, like I said, I let the parents know. Please let me know ahead of time because it's important for me for the bus to not go there and they're waiting there and their student's not going to be there. Same with the city transit. I have a family who was like, okay, we need to let them know because otherwise you're going to get one week suspension. Or like, they need a whole bunch of routes throughout the city. Let's see, connect to the transit. I also connect with the city transit for ECFE families that have the parent classes. If they don't have transportation, I set them up for them, the time and everything, pick up and drop off. And I will also reach out to them, cancel the ride so they don't stop there again.
Now we're moving on? I was a little ahead of myself. It's okay, now we're moving on. All right, now we're moving on. Academics, going back to the three-day letters. I work a lot with Otman and, at the high school, sorry, at the high school, work a lot with Otman and Maria, the attendance clerk, just to keep up with academics. Because if they start missing school, it also affects them a lot on their grades. I review their grades, which is my caseload at the high school, ninth, 10th, 11th, and seniors still. I review their grades and that just helps me reach out to the parents. Going back to our cell phones, I have permission from parents to send out text messages to their kids after I stalk them a little bit on Infinite Campus. Like, hey, reminder, you have these assignments pending. And conferences also help because I'm the one that reviews their grades and then say they are failing two or more classes. It's like, I don't give the parents massive an option anymore for conferences because otherwise they'll be like, no, that's okay. It's like, no, your child is failing two or more classes. Like, we need to get in here to set up a conference. So that helps. And then after, two or three weeks after conferences, I go back and check their grades just to make sure that they've gone up. The percentages have gone up and the missing assignments have been turned in.
Thank you. And I believe Barack does the same thing when it comes to the high school as well.
Yes, and everything that I explained, and this is everything we do. As they explain, it doesn't exempt than what I do. It's everything basically the same, transportation. Basically, I'm not going to repeat everything.
Just different language.
Yeah, just the language is different, we do everything. Just the difference is I do it by myself.
Yeah. Yeah.
Good job.
What really, sorry, what really does help us is that we have either bi-weekly or weekly meetings with Ion, with, as a team. So she's been a really great support for us. Like, hey, what are you guys falling behind? Or great reminders with some things that I, my experience, I may forget. So yes, we do have a lot of communication with us.
It's teamwork. We work as a team and that's important to continue. So the next slide should have been, how, we wanted to ask the parents their experience. So how does having student support liaison position help you to improve your experience with the district? And the next couple pages are testimonial from parents. I will have you read. Take a moment. Okay, and then the last testimonial. We wanted to see what is the experience for our parents in the district who had children prior having the school liaisons present and now. And here is the question, how was your experience prior having a student support liaison position in the district? And the response is right here, another testimonial from a parent. And the last, and at least, page is the vision for next year. What we've learned this year and how can we improve? And the first thing that we will focus on will be student-focused. And that's something that it was clear that we were heavily on parent contact and missing the opportunity providing that support to our students. So that's one thing that is going to be looked at and work as a team to support each other and see how we could provide the support for our students. The second is academic-focused. Again, high school, we're really doing that great job. However, I think middle school could be next and maybe providing more support to other high school students. Establishing groups in the middle and high school. Again, we, as of right now, I am working with one group at the high school, but hopefully that we could expand, especially when we added another liaison position, Shar, who is a Native American. And that's one thing that she really wants to do to start hosting groups for Native American students so she could, she wants to teach them and remind them about the culture and the language and the strength of the culture within the Native American. So there will be more groups established for the middle and the high school. And hopefully, we will all work together hosting those groups and. and being mindful on providing the extra support for our students. Collaborating with social workers and counselors for social emotional needs, which we will have the program that we will be purchasing hopefully. And that will be something that our office is really excited to work with student support services and to be part of how to expand and how to reach all the students and make it more equitable for all our students. Establishing, this is something that I'm gonna work on personally, establishing preventive strategies and to be more proactive instead of reactive when it comes to student behaviors. And how can we, we as an office could be more an asset to students who may be lacking the support or lacking the, some of that in a position of power that looks like. But it is important for our students to see themselves in a position that are leaders. And so, a lot of students see these ladies, they're, they're role models and leaders. So, it's important for them to be in front of the students and provide that extra support. And the last, not least, is revisiting the data collecting. And one of them is collecting the data when it comes to liaisons, their, their work, day-to-day work. And how can, it was really interesting to collect data from each one of them and then put them in together. And then I asked Michael from the technology department. And he has great ideas and I can't wait to work with him for next year.
This isn't a question, this is a comment. For those, they gave the education committee this presentation and it's in-depth in all of this. And on the paperwork that you see in front of you, it looks amazing. You have no idea how remarkable it is that they do this on a daily basis for our students. It's unreal, the benefit to the students that they provide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
I have a couple of questions. I was just thinking about this after we had met too. And so, remind me on this, the one that, I don't even know what page this is, the one that had the 2923. So, when were these numbers, these were, when did you, when did these numbers start? Were they September 1st that these started? When did you start doing the form?
It's, it's right when I started. This is something that I came with me, cause I, again, my prior experience as a social worker, we collected data and, and this is something that, that was really important. And I'm glad that the team agreed and they started in right in August, two weeks when I, yeah, two weeks after this started.
And it wasn't necessarily like one per person, it could have been, was that the one that it was like, it could have been like the kid on the playground had the behavior, then we contacted the parents. It could be a multiple counts, okay? And then, and on that one too, that it has like all the names and then Aion. And so, so what, so you're not on any, so like what are you doing during the day when they're doing all the liaison work? What, are you in one of the buildings as well then or where are you?
Yeah, I am at the high school. So, 25% of my job is direct service and the other 25% is outreach. And 50% is providing professional development for our staff and providing support for our building leaders. So, when they're doing all of that, it's not necessary that I am not doing anything, but I am doing something, maybe either supporting each one of them, supporting the buildings. Like today, I collaborated with one of the social workers to provide, there's a student that, North, that needs extra support. And after we provided that support, we needed to go back and check. Okay, how can we monitor progress in social, emotional and social skills? So, that's example that I'm doing.
Sure.
So, just because I'm not keeping track, I didn't do that this year. I didn't think I needed to do that, but next year you will see my numbers added on here. The only numbers under my name, you'll see it's the social justice group.
Okay. Well, and like I said, like Mariposa, when I worked, I mean, awesome work. Like us people who only speak one language, we wouldn't be able to do our job without you guys. So, it's great work and I'm glad to, we happy to have you guys cause like I said, we wouldn't be able to do our jobs without you or other people wouldn't be able to. So, thank you.
I'm really excited to see this focus in pre-K and K and then kinda carries through to first, second and third. And what does that look like in six years or what does that look like in 12 years? When these kids have known you and known the program for their entire career? And you know, what does that mean for your connections that you build with families? If that pre-K student is their first kid and then they have, like my family, I have four kids in the district. And so, what happens with those relationships with the kids that come next? And I think all of this just builds on itself and I'm just really excited to see the program grow and continue.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for having us.
All right, next up on the information on items, first reading of revisions to the policy manual, the 300s.
Yes, pretty short chapter or section rather, the 300s. And we are to the point now where we are reviewing these every third year. So, this is a three-year review on these and we didn't have any changes for them.
Nice.
So, we will bring them back in, at the next meeting. Oh, no, we don't need to, cause we don't have substantial.
Right.
So, we should.
But it says here that they're here for a first reading. So, we're probably, yeah, it should have been for one reading.
Yep.
It's a little confusing when we do that.
Do your homework, give us some changes to make.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Take your time.
Yeah. All right.
That's it.
That's it, okay. Reports.
Yeah.
Got some stats.
Good evening, thanks for having us tonight. Mr. Graff is supervising a concert tonight, so he could not be with us, Taylor Swift, yes.
At least it's not the high school closed.
That's what he told us, but, so, early childhood, it is all things spring and outside and fun. While the weather's nice, we're going. So, we have park trips, field trips, we have south trips, we release butterflies. It is all about what can we get those kids outside and moving and learning about nature, et cetera. So, we'll continue with that. We do wrap up the last weekend, May, just as South and North do as well. We are taking registrations for our fall programming. We do have some sections that are filled up, but we still have some open. Just depends on the days of the week. So, we would encourage folks to call our office to get more information on that or look at our district website and, and there's a link right there. Kinda looking ahead to summer, we'll have our Summer Stars Academy program again this year. That's our targeted services program for children in grades K through eight. It's by invitation based on need, academic need. It focuses on reading and math instruction. So, that program will run June 26th through July 27th this year. We will be taking the week of the 4th of July off, but we will still have four weeks, four hours a day, four days a week, our four by four by four program. We're hoping to be able to serve those students. Breakfast and lunch are based on an open enrolled qualification for free meals. So, those invitations just went out to students in K-4 today and the middle school is working on those invitations as well.
All right, my goodness, I don't know if I can talk as quickly as you did.
Nice job.
And at South, we just finished up our fast assessments. That's the assessment that we give three times a year. So, we just have a few stragglers left to catch, but for the most part, all of the classrooms have completed their assessments. We were also graced by the FFA club last week, who I'm happy to report, no sheep were found roaming on the South Hill. Still one of my favorite memories, pull it up to school. And there were sheep all over the hill and there were kids chasing out. You know, so every year.
Were they on the lam?
Yes, I believe they were.
You should take that on the road.
So, they were all kept, they were kept where they needed to be for last week's event. So, it is just a really great event because they do a nice job. The students do a wonderful job of sharing how to take care of the animals. They get to pet the animals, they get to find out what products come from them. And, and it's just one of those where there's smiles on everyone's face. And thankfully, it did not rain. We were a little bit worried about that, but there was a break in the clouds long enough so that we could get all of that in. ET, you've talked a little bit about how they're visiting our school and we send our first graders over to North, so I'm sure you'll mention that a little bit. But last week, they had the opportunity to visit with their classrooms and then they came back in the evening with their families. So, there's always a lot of excitement and, so they can go and see Mr. Elke. And then what else? Oh, we have the Mankato Diversity Council coming tomorrow and they go into all of our classrooms and they do a wonderful job presenting something called promoting respect. So, they will come and each classroom gets about a 45-minute presentation and it covers all different kinds of respect, from different abilities to just different differences in people and how we need to respect one another. Kindergarten also will be visiting the fire department. They focus on community, fire department, the police department and the, I read them. And we are excited to have the parade of graduates moving through all of the schools and she'll probably talk a little more about that on May 30th. And we are also celebrating our parent council end of the year celebration on that same day. And there will be llamas, so if you would like to come, you can get a, outside llamas. So, last year we were rained out, so we were really disappointed, but we're, hopefully we will have nice weather. We've had enough rain now and they will be there. And the best thing about South parties are they are one and a half hours long. So, come at five, you can buy dinner and you can be home and in bed by 6:40 if you want. We also are still taking kindergarten registrations, our numbers are slowly going up. It's just really important if we still have anyone that needs to register, please encourage them to come in. We did send paper forms home with students in the local preschools just trying to make sure that we can get our numbers where they need to be so we can do some planning for next year, so.
We did have pony rides today. Since you're bringing up the llamas and the sheep, we had a little pony come today, so that was kind of fun. Anyway, on that note.
All right, very good. Greetings from North Elementary. I feel a little weak on the, on the animal part. We have squirrels running around the block. Yeah, Dorian mentioned the parade of graduates. That's something, we just started recently, but it, yeah, last year it made me think of fourth grade graduation hats, even though they're not graduating fourth graders, kinda moving up. But every year, we put kids' pictures in fourth grade with a little mortarboard on the window and it's, it's been a tradition as long as I've been there. And it's so funny to watch the fourth graders, they like walk by and they're like, er, hit the brakes. Like, what am, like where, where am I going? Am I leaving here? Yep, time, time to head off to the middle school. It kinda starts to sink in in their minds, they're like, wait a minute, I'm done, I'm done with elementary. So, but yeah, they're definitely ready to go, they're doing a great job. In fact, I was able to put together our new Gaga ball pit with our fourth grade student council members on Friday. And that thing was pretty complex. It was, it's, it's brand new improved. They worked on raising the funds for it, which they did, assembled it 16, no, it was like 32 separate pieces with stakes, like metal stakes this long that go in between each of the joints. And the six of them figured it out. It was really interesting, they, they found a spot for it, sledgehammered it into the, not the concrete, but the, the, one of the kickball fields. And they did it in an hour, I was really impressed. And the kids were just pumped up. I mean, as soon as that was placed out there, the next morning, I think there were probably kids out there at 7:00 AM playing Gaga ball. So, yeah, it was awesome. So, yeah, thanks to Mandy Kennedy and the student council crew, student member for getting that little project all in place this year and installed. Spring concerts coming up, we have our concert on the 18th, it's gonna be at the high school. Thank you for visiting.
You're welcome.
And you're performing at art stage up there, they're looking forward to it. We're gonna take the whole building up there in the afternoon, all 420 of them. We had your way to practice in the afternoon and then evening performances start at 7:15. I believe your second grade starts at 7:15, probably every. Thirty minutes at each grade level, we'll take the stage, so I'm looking forward to that. Like Mrs. Elke mentioned, we had the incoming second graders visit on Tuesday and Thursday of last week. So, during the school day, they come and, and get the tour from our kindness crew. They show them the whole building with their homeroom teacher and then that evening. And it is an hour and a half, like there's an hour and a half window in there for any activity that you have at the elementary level works perfectly. But they brought their families in that same evening. And then their job was to give their family a tour of North. And that, that's just an open house, but it goes really well, especially families that have had kids come through North. They're kinda like, yep, I kinda know the layout, know the routine. And the programming isn't that big of a shift from South to North. I mean, our programming is very similar, just a new building, new space. They need to get used to that one. And that's about it. Just a reminder, you know, report cards coming out on June 5th when we all those out. Homeroom teacher assignments, that won't come out until the beginning of August. Gets to be the time of year, people are asking about that, about next year's teacher, along with the welcome packet. And then like Mrs. Prackey said, busy place in the summer, St. OT, all K-4, summer school. Department uses a bunch, obviously it's gonna be a little quieter without the read and V. And we've been used to that for a lot of years. That's, that'll be a shift, it'll be a little quieter that way.
Well, I have a lot to learn from my colleagues. I'm going to perhaps suggest an hour and a half prom next year. That is a very late night for old ladies. Speaking of prom, prom went off without a hitch, it was great. Kids stayed until the, most kids stayed until the very end and seemed to have a really good time. The next time I will maybe be seeing some of you is graduation on June 2nd. And again, you're invited to come a little bit early together and then pass out those diplomas on stage. So, looking forward to that evening. This Wednesday is our pops concert and it's gonna be, it's gonna be a big one. They're gonna do a silent auction beforehand and there are 30-some solos, mostly seniors. Not full song solos, but at least parts of songs. So, so that's one thing that Ms. Burksrum does a really great job discovering talent and depth within her choir. So, I'm really excited about that evening. Sunday is senior awards afternoon, so a lot of organizations will be giving a lot of money out to our graduating seniors. Obviously, we already talked about the most exciting part about May 24th, our rocket launch. But that is also scheduled for the same time as our fun run and walk. So, hopefully, fingers crossed, that's a beautiful day. And you guys already talked about the graduation walk. Then senior week comes up really, really fast and it's a race to the finish from here on out.
Guess it's my turn. It is hard to believe that it is, like we're in the final weeks of school. And as you've heard, it's busy times, it's fun times, there's lots of traditions and field trips and concerts and activities and the graduation parade. And I'm here to remind you, it's important to hold to the end of the row. As has been said in the past anyway. But we do wanna make sure that our kids have a strong academic finish. There are still many, many lessons in three weeks of school. And so, don't let that summer slide get in the way of a strong finish. It's more for our students than you, take a breath. Nothing, you know, they were looking very nervous like, oh, anyway. I do wanna say that with the heavy rains we've had over the last three days, things might need to look a little different for the rest of the week. We heard there is a possibility that the Highway 99 bridge may be closed as early as tonight. And then with the construction on 22, that's really, makes it difficult for us to get kids back and forth from Cusota. And so, really the only route would be to either go to La Sure or go to Mankato and all the way around. So, this, if this does happen, it would affect buses 2, 3, 7, 14 and 20, vans 20, 32 and 34. It would change pickup times, drop off times. And if families are affected, St.'s bus is gonna make contact, let them know what those. And if families are affected, Saint's bus is going to make contact, let them know what those changes are, uh, or what their options are. You know, families say, oh, never mind, I'll just, I'll pick them up or drop them off. That's okay too, but we, we want to know what those plans are. And, um, I believe schools will send out messages as well if that, um, if that bridge does indeed close. The river is, uh, predicted to peak on Wednesday. So hopefully the waters will recede, but if you looked at the forecast, you see there's possible rain on Thursday and Friday. So we'll, we will see what happens. Um, I, you know, for me, this is, this is kind of new. Uh, but I know that this has happened in the past before too, where both the bridge and 22, uh, were impassable. So we can do this, uh, just asking for a little, a little space and a little grace as we all, um, deal with floodwaters because there's not a whole lot that we can do differently. So, um, just be listening for that news. We've also been keeping an eye on the legislation. Um, Mr. Kelp might be going to speak to that. I know the bills are created, just waiting for acceptance and for the governor's signature. The base pieces, 4%, 2%, 45% on the cross subsidy, or it was close to 45%. Two and a half to 3% inflator built in. For us, that kind of gives us a sigh of kind of relief because those numbers are exactly what we built our budget on. And so we were hopeful that we would get at least, at least that. So, um, thank you, Mr. Regner. And, uh, for our work together on that and setting it where it needed to be. So. Devil could be in the details though, as far as mandates and other pieces. There's all kinds of organizations going through those bills line by line. And they provide school districts with here's exactly what it means for your district. And so we will be looking into all of the details in the coming days and weeks. So with that, um, I hope everyone has a final wonderful three weeks of school. And the board doesn't meet again until after graduation. So I hopefully will see most of you at graduation.
I would like to share a condolences with the events, events of family as we lost our Gina. Uh, we'd like to call her best way after a long battle with cancer. And she worked both at South Elementary when she started and our school district are as a paraprofessional. Then she worked in the reading office with me and continued on as the targeted services and early childhood program assistant. And so we will miss her greatly. Our plan is to put a memorial on bench in our early childhood playground in her memory. So again, thanking her family for sharing her with us and, um, our condolences go out to them.
So around the table, Ben, Tim, nope, Tracy.
It's graduation. Woo-hoo. Um, I just want to know a question about with the state high school league and coming up with the boys volleyball, spring sport. I'm guessing that obviously St. Peter's is just going to be like, we're doing boys volleyball. That'll probably be something that maybe discussed like, but where are we at with our curriculum review? Like how often do we review what we do for sports and things like that? Cause people have asked. I'm like, well, that doesn't mean we're doing boys volleyball. Like we have a lot of sports, so just everybody slow your roll here. But I'm just curious what the process is for consideration of such things.
Pass you off to Principal.
I can, I can speak to that and then shake and correct me tomorrow if I'm wrong. Uh, typically we do a program review of, um, our activities program, like everything else, once every five years. Uh, I believe Jordan wrapped that up his, his last year. So we're on year two now. Um, but anytime we're looking at adding something like that, obviously we have to, you know, survey for interest. Also adding, adding a boys sport means.
Got to be careful.
Adding another girl's sport. So, so there's a lot to consider, um, before jumping in.
I was just, it's just nice to pass something about that. So, thanks. That was really my only question. And then graduation, woo-hoo.
You got one?
Yeah. I'm so professional, aren't I?
I have some, some bad news, I guess.
Come on, Bill.
The Nickland County Collaborative, Matt and. Tracy's part of it, so. But, uh, we had requested 107,907 dollars. And I don't think that we will be giving you that much money. Combine the five different organizations ask for 245,747 dollars. And we're figuring that if we're lucky, we'll collect a little over 150,000 dollars. And the board decided that, you know, it's not very frugal to spend almost 100,000 more than you collect. It just doesn't seem to work out too well in the budget. So, um, we're going to meet again Thursday morning and figure out how we're going to go out the funds. So I don't think we'll be getting 107,000. We'll be closer to 66 or something.
And not to intrude on your time, but the more I think about that, and by the way, I'm on that for MVN, just so we understand why we're both on there. But the more I think about that, the more I wonder, we have to figure out why, why we're getting less. I think that that random moments, if you look at that funding, like that started to dip before COVID even hit. So I would like to figure out why that funding is dipping. You know what I mean? I just think that, I don't know. Do some digging. Maybe Mr. Grandseth can figure that out before next month.
And I know one of the requirements of all partners is that they contribute financially to that pot of money that gets doled out. And so is there any reduction in that piece of it?
That was also, that was also part of the thing that we were considering.
It's, it's complicated to say the least, cause they also are looking at trying to fund a coordinator for that rather than.
Which is interesting.
Yeah.
When you don't have.
Well.
That's why I was smiling.
Yeah, it's, it'll, it'll be interesting to see how it all pulls out. So. And that 150,000 is what we get from the federal government. That doesn't take into consideration the money that each partner is supposed to contribute. And you turn around and just hand it back to them. One of those, uh, complexities of government aid, I guess. So that's that. And it's been a very learn, uh, learning experience for me. So, cause I had.
I will agree. It has been interesting.
Then as far as the legislature goes, uh, it's still a toss-up. I mean, we think we know what's going to happen, but until the conference committees work it out and sign up and both houses pass it, we're not, we won't know for sure. I heard they sent something back today again to, to work on it some more. So. But it is interesting, um, the four and two with the amounts then tied to inflation. But it, it's kind of. Sometimes I think you gotta watch what you wish for, cause they did set a minimum 2% and a maximum of 3%. So I don't know how many you have if you go back according to the years prior to the last two, how much inflation has gone up those years. So. We'll see what happens along those lines. The special end subsidy was going to be at 40%. Fiscal years 24 through 26. And then, uh, fiscal year 27 will be 50%. So that's somewhat of an increase. Um, I think there's a better payoff on the ELL subsidies. Not knowing all the numbers and how they affect our district exactly, it's, it's hard to say. Plus there are a lot of hidden costs in the policy and the labor bills.
Yeah.
And we may, we may not get an increase at all. That 4% may be eaten up by all of those mandated additions. It's going to be close.
So.
Oh, I do. I just want to call out the kids that went to state history day at the end of April. They did an amazing job and they really deserve the recognition that they got and they did, the work was amazing. And then I'd also like to, on behalf of the Mr. Graff who's not here, the Native American Parent Advisory Group is hosting on May 31st, about four o'clock, uh, an end of the year ceremony to which the public is going to be invited. So stay tuned and watch for the publicity on that event. Got a new teepee that's going to be introduced and blessed and all that. So there we go. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, so we have some upcoming meetings. HR committee on Thursday at 4:00 PM. We have a, oh, no.
That was canceled.
Special board meeting. Policy committee Wednesday, the 31st at four o'clock, the district office, graduation.
Woo. There you go. You're, you're getting the spirit there, Ben.
Friday, Friday, June 2nd at 8:00 PM at St. Peter High School. Uh, education committee Tuesday, the 13th at 1:00 PM in the district office. Business commi- committee Wednesday, the 14th of June at 4:00 PM in the district office. And all of those leading up to, of course, our regular board meeting, which is Monday, June 19th, 6:30 PM right here.
What time do we have to be there for graduation?
Seven.
Probably between seven and 7:30. Starts at eight. So.
Meet in the usual place.
Which is the office.
Office.
Yep.
Perfect.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
It does take a while to pin all those flowers.
So.
It does.
And to select groups, right?